Welcome back everybody into another Backtesting Session. We were closing with the week on up to the 28th of January and we're going to start with the 31st. As you can see, let's check if we have any news. We have some purchasing manager index at 444, at 445. But let's start and see immediately with the price action what is actually happening on the chart. So, let's get into it really fast. So, this is New York open. As you can see, we are reacting at these previous highs. We have so far these previous lows which might, as you can see, from this bearish pressure, might already be looking down. So I will wait to have some bearish PSA. So far we have these highs. And if we create some sort of support, then I would be looking for sales below that support. We can see that we have a key level of our PSA at this level and that's where it's also important to have it, to keep it in mind. So, so far as you can see, we created now this support over here. So that's where we could possibly take some sales. Now, price action is slowing down at these highs. I want to see of course some clear strong breakout. Now you can clearly see that from the size of the candles, when the actual 8:20 AM Eastern is kicking. And yeah, let's see if we can have some proper price action and clear direction. I wouldn't take immediately the first entry, but let's see if we have further confirmation of the price going bearish. Otherwise, yeah, it's very, it's pushing up quite aggressively. Let's see if we have a clear breakout and then a retest. So far not really clean in the breakout, so that's why there's no entry so far. Now we might see that there's been some heavy bouncing from this level, from these previous highs. And now we are staying consistently above this level. I would probably wait for some clear candles that might give me the enter point. Okay, this is need a nice breakout. Even any retest of this candle highs would be good. Yeah, as you can see, the price isn't slowing down. We can take the entry. For example, a high risk guy would enter at this level with this candle after the breakout. This would be the trade idea that we are looking for and yeah, that's the setup. We would accept any results from that because that's our setup. Let me delete this. Okay, as you can see, it would immediately go to profit. Very nice. So that will be a plus 45. Now what we are looking at is of course either continuation buys or some possible rejection of sales. But let's focus on the trend. So far the trend is up one. So if we have a retest of this previous highs or this previous on the block highs, that's where we might take a possible further trade on the upside. Or possible breakout above. I don't really like this price action, even though the price can easily bounce from here. I don't like the fact that we have a lot of bearish candles and the price already bounced a little bit and failed to reject. So it's quite sketchy to enter buys immediately. It's not like the momentum is that strong in my, in my direction. Yeah, the price might still have this bearish candle and then bounce back up. And I wouldn't lose that opportunity, but I know that I will probably have another opportunity above these previous high highs. So now we're coming into New York target change. Let's see where is the price action if we have some clear breakout of there. Yeah, we have a clear break and retest. The possible entry is very close to the actual news, but let's see if we are getting surprised by it. For example, over there. So we would have this purchasing manager showing that it's a big improvement, way more than expected. So it's also something to be taken into account because the price might immediately bounce back down. So with the dollar strength. Yeah, as expected. That's why it wasn't really a good idea to enter here, but yeah, that's part of the setup anyway. So let's see, this would be a loss. Now where would I take any sales due to the fact that also fundamentally the price action is quite, fundamentally the bias is bearish. We'll probably look for this trade idea. Let's see if we have any other opportunity. Okay, the price is breaking below. With a possible retest. Yeah, but yeah, that will be a further loss. So, let's see. And now coming, yeah, we still have half an hour of this, this New York session. Let's see now what is actually happening later. Okay, yeah, nothing was happening. So we closed the day with like a 15 pips win, one win and two losses. And there was no price action after that. So now we are starting with the first half of February, so start of the month. We can see already there's a little bit of volatility already. We are making new highs, we are making, we have these lows on the left side. Possible buys, possible sells. Let's see now, I don't know if we have any news on the first half of the month. You know, we have after, at 444, we have some PMIs and ISM PMIs. So let's see what is actually happening. If there's some movement before that or we have to wait for that, for that to happen. Now we are closing below. As you can see, we're still bouncing from the key level. Yeah, a lot of weird price action, nothing really happening so far. I mean, I would not take this entry because of the slow volume, slow, there is no big candles closing and then there's not really a lot of momentum for me to enter with that. And yeah, now I would take some sales below these lows. We also are getting some possible opportunity for buys above that if we have a good strong price action. But also it's, it's always good to wait up until the, the actual bigger report. And now it's 430, which is New York target change opening. We have these lows. Okay, now let's see if we are getting some opportunity. Yeah, not yet. Waiting for the news. Okay, now the price is clearly having bearish momentum. We are having the news. Let's see what is the actual news coming up. So the S and P was coming up better, improved and the PMI was better than expected, but still worse than previous. So I would want to see also the jobs openings, better than expected, but lower than previous because this one was also revised on the upside. So I will wait for the reaction of the market to understand it. Yes. Okay, so this is the news. We are reacting now at the key level. If we have some clear breakout below, I will take sales. Otherwise over there, I will take the buys. I really am not in condition to, to know what to expect from the market. Okay, so yeah, this is actually the second news, which is happening, which was happening 15 minutes later. And this, this PMI, better than expected, but still lower than prior. Some were good, others are bad. So it's quite a mixed data. I'm not really sure about the bias. Still, we have very strong closing below. We are retesting, probably retesting the lows. That's where we could simply take a spare price action. We could possibly take the sales. Yeah, so if we took a sell over here, it would have been a loss. So let's see now if we have further continuation down below. Okay, looks like not. We might have a breakout of these highs, a possible continuation bullish. Okay, so far nothing really happening. I don't know if there's another, another part of this day of this session. We're going to find out pretty soon. And let's see if we have further opportunities, otherwise the day is simply gone. If we just watch it, we saw that the price was slowly going bearish, yes. But there were no real trade ideas. We have this retest to these previous lows, which would have been profitable, but only like with the news and it would almost take you out. So that would be like an hour and a half of just waiting for a breakout. Even this breakout would be first a loss and then a win. So it's, it was quite sketchy. But let's see. Okay, so yeah, it looks like we have the second part of this. We have these lows. Let's see if we have now what we were waiting for, which is a push above or safest above these highs. Okay. Let's see, of course we would have these lows for sales. Okay. It's 10:30. We are now probably breaking above. Not, not a real strong price action. So I don't know if I would, I would take this opportunity after these nice candles. Thinking, seeing these ones are not really looking very pretty, I would say. But if it's strong and it stays there, that's still a possible opportunity. For example, here staying there and yeah, pushing up, failing to make a new high. Let's see if it breaks above. Yeah, no, nothing really, nothing really matter, that matters. Even this entry over here. Oh, 3.7, oh 7, yeah, not even 40 pips. So let's move on to next day. So it's a Wednesday, the 2nd of February. New York is starting over there. I don't know if we have, yeah, probably we add ADP. Most likely, let's see with the news. So we have ADP, yeah, at the 15, coming out really, really bad. Much lower than expected, much lower than previous one. Very, very bad. So this should fit into bullish bias. What's the bias of these levels? Still very weirdly, there's not much of an impact. I don't know if there's something. They're not waiting for any other news. Yeah, we'll still stick to these trade ideas. Now we have these lows being broken. Let's see if we have a retest of these ones. Yeah, there was no entry. Okay. Yeah, if we had to take this retest, it would have been a loss. Let's see now if we have something on the bullish side. A bit over there. Okay, yeah, not really simply staying there in this range. Okay, we add some big volume impact at 5, which is the 10 AM candle, but failing to break above, failing to stay above. And yeah, only here we can have this actual trade idea playing out above these previous highs. I don't even know if that will go into profits. No, yeah. Simple bouts of volatility, but no real entries. Yeah, we had the retest of the key level on the dot, but not any price action. So that was a loss, simply a loss. Okay, let's see now if we have another part of the day or the day was over. 3rd of February. It's a Thursday. So on Thursday we have the jobless claims as always. We'll see. Yes, at 3:30. So let's see now on the 3rd of February, what is the position so far on gold. We have these PSAs. Okay, jobless claims coming up soon, coming up here. Let's see if we have any reaction. Jobless claims, mixed data because the revision showed us that it was much improved from the previous month. Because the previous one was said to be to 60, but it was actually to 35, to 32, which is good. And but this one is a little bit worse than prior, but still way better than expected. So I don't really know what, how the, the market will take it. And we have some PMIs again at 444 and 5. So let's see if we have any reaction. And so far as per market, simple price action, we are possibly retesting these highs for possible continuation buy. Will still be safe this entry, really weird price action. Floating, floating, yeah, not really much happening up until later. And yeah, an entry over there would be a loss. And let's see now if we have any news. Let's see, let's see with the news, what the market is actually telling us. We have these previous lows that can be retested on the downside after all this market structure. And buys of course above these highs now. Okay. So we have the news probably coming up soon and that it was better than previous, better than expected. And at 10 AM we have the second, the second ones. That's why we have now a mixed data as you can see. This is 444, 440, this is 445. This is the action news. So with the news, we are strongly bearish. Now we are already breaking below these lows. That's the retest that we would love to see. Okay. For example, an enter over there, that was the retest, would be safe. I think even an entry over there as per high risk guy would, would still be safe. And I'm going to see, let's see if price can give us another further opportunity or just, yeah, just going down. Simply pushing down and enter over there would be 18.02, 18.35 would be, it's above 18.02. Yeah, that should be fine. That would be a win. Yeah, we can retest. And then over here, yes. It was actually going down before the news. So that's, that's quite, quite sketchy. But yeah, and let's save this one. And let's move to the next one. Okay, so now we are seeing the price action going very strong bearish. We add this previous PSA on the left hand side. Now let's see if we can create further, yeah, it's really dumped like 100 pips. And really unless you, it's even before the news basically. So that's weird. Let's see if we have further price action. We have these lows, these highs. Yeah, we might have taken, I don't know if I would be waiting for the 10 AM candle, which would, this would be this one. Which will show us a decrease in these numbers. So now I'm expecting a bullish price action, especially above these highs. And only this, below these lows, I would be taking entry. But yeah, for the sake of, for the sake of it, I will take, I will say that I took this sell over there. That lost. And now I will be looking for sales only below these lows. So now let's see a price action. Yeah, pushing up, retesting it and then going back up. So this entry would be absolutely perfect. Retesting these previous highs on the left hand side, which would be a winning trade. Now we are facing this rejection. I'm not really, this candle doesn't give you the potential to enter below that. So let's see if we have another opportunity with a breakeven retest of these lows. But the bias is also strongly bullish with the news. So the numbers were quite strongly bullish. We are retesting these lows. That's meaning that we could possibly retrace all the way back to the key level. Yeah, it would not. So I don't know if there has another one, yeah. So if we would be, yeah, we're also retesting these lows, these highs perfectly. So let's say, yeah, let's say that we took these lows anyway. And let's see if we have another opportunity. Okay, now we have this bullish push that we saw. Of course now we have this price action over here. Sales only below there, buys above this level. Okay, we have a retest. Let's see if we have a continuation up. Yeah, slow volume and prices dying down. This might be the retest is a little bit late, I would say. But let's see if I spend the setup. It is a good entry. Yeah, that'd be a good entry. Simply as per setup, that's, that's great. Breakable, we would have also these further entries over there. If I was not in this trade, that, that's another entry. Yeah, that would be, that would be okay. Very good. So let's move on into the Friday, I would say, Friday, the 4th. Which is the NFP. So let's wait of course for the time of the NFP. Now we're coming. And yeah, New York open. We have these lows, we have these highs. We'll be waiting for, yeah, NFP, NFP. This is actually before NFP I guess, but let's see the NFP numbers, what they, they are telling us. So they revised the previous one, which was said to be 199 to 569K, which is super good. And it's very good, the 467K compared to the expected 150K. The unemployment rate, it's still growing a little bit, around 0.1%, which is not that good. But I'm still very bearish on gold. We can see this possible retest over here. Yeah, that's immediately going to profits, huge profits. Retest of these previous lows. Okay, let's see now. I think yes, that's the, the only idea that we have in this time. Let's see with the next one. Okay, so that was the trade idea. We are, of course, now we are bearish, we are breaking below these lows. We are creating some sort of market structure. And we could take possible further sales with a breakout and retest of these lows and key level. So as you can see, we could take this entry. Okay, we're staying down. Yeah. A little bit of drawdown for that and then going straight into profits. Very good. We have these lows, possibly to be retested on the buys above this key level. Okay, yeah, we might be facing this entry. So far we are still safe. We are up 30 pips. Yeah, we simply need a push below and that's a safe, a safe 45 pips. Very good. We can see also that we are retesting these lows and then continuation down for 40 more pips. I was to be in this trade, so that's not a safe, that's not an entry that I would, I would have taken. It was simply a confirmation. Now we have a key level and a previous lows to be retested. And we have this conglomerate of price sensitivity area, which could bring us the liquidity necessary to continue bearish. We're coming into the new four hour now. So that was already a very aggressive first part of New York session. So let's be very, very cautious. For example, if we took this entry, let's see how it will go. Yeah, it will push up because of course there's a lot of profit taking after this huge bearish move. Let's see if we have another retest of this area for possible continuation, a simple continuation up. And now this retest of this low, but still failing to break above these highs. So not really, I mean, looking at any buy yet. And we can see we are also having a breakeven retest of these lows. Which is the same one that we did before, which is the, which ended up in a loss. I don't know if this one would be a loss. Okay. Yeah, looks like with the New York target change opening, we have the final retest of the key level. And we might continue pushing down. No, it's actually not. So this is 37.5 pips. I don't know if that's a 45 pips win, but let's see. Let's now if we have a further retest of this area for possible buys. Yeah, no, it's actually closing bearish again. So let's see now if this one was a loss or a win. 18.03. This is 99 flat. Which is actually, it's 40 pips. Yeah, so it's 40 pips. So that will be, will still be a loss. Okay, and we have the bounce from the key level. Now let's see with the last hour, because it's the 10 AM candle. Okay, we're coming up, we're pushing bullish. This one we already saw it. We have this area over there. As you can see, if you simply don't look on the left hand side, that's where you, it's a scalper. Sometimes it fucks you up. This one is clearly, if you look, just simply look at this, it's clearly bullish. But let's see now what the, what the perception is telling us. We have these retest areas for possible buys. This is for lows or sales. Yeah, we might have this area for buys. Or further buys again. As you can see, we have these lows. And we have this buy. And then the safest buy above there. So even if I don't take this one, because it's losing. I have the retest of this previous highs. For possible continuation bullish. Which will actually be a losing trade. So yes. Better to take this one and avoid that one, but yeah. Better to take this one and avoid that one, but yeah. Okay, now we have the retest of this previous PSA. But the volume is quite mixed, there's not really, uh, much of a direction so far anymore. So quite a strong, um... Quite a very weird day. Would have been two losses, one win, three lo, three wins and four losses and one win. So yeah, it would still be a profitable day, but quite messy. And yeah, that was, that was Friday and that's, that's it of the, for the week. I hope you guys enjoyed and I'll see you next time.